Brad.
You are live.
Thank you. Amanda, just because we're. Oh, just because. Could you please do roll call?
Ms. Brainer? Yes, here, Mr. Dickinson. Ms. Seaver? Here, Mr. Agnew. Ms. Gillis? Here, Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Lamoff? Mr. Wild?
Here.
Mr. Gaddy? Mr. Swan?
Who's up?
Mr. Swan has regretfully resigned.
Okay, we do need to amend the resolution to take him off the committee.
Okay.
So we'll need to do that if he's officially on the committee until we do something different.
Okay.
And then Mr. Leggett?
Here.
You do have a quorum present. Without Mr. Swan, you still have a quorum.
We do have a quorum.
Yep.
Okay.
Amanda, we do have a representative for Wayne. You're next to me.
Right, but Mr. Lamoff is the only one who counts as a member of this committee.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Right, so let me just take first off, I'm Claudia Brainerd, I'm one of the co-chairs along with Supervisor Dennis Dickinson, who is on his way, he'll be here any minute, I'm sure. Whilst I'm missing Ray, he'll be here from the hospital. And then Mike Swan, Treasurer, did resign. So we'll want to take care of that. But first on the agenda, I do want to offer the floor to the public if anyone wants to provide comments as we get started. And then we can work on some housekeeping resolutions. Does anyone from the public want to speak to the committee? Go ahead, make sure you have the mic and speak into the microphone at the podium. And that goes for committee members too. There are some complaints that people can't be heard, so please speak into your mics. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, thank you. My name is Emma Barcher, I'm a proud Warren County resident and Director of SUNY Plattsburgh Branch Campus in Queensberry, New York. I want to start by thanking the ARPA Committee for this opportunity and for your commitment to addressing ARPA priorities. I also want to thank you for passing our Cardinal Chromebook Technology Assistance Proposal, which would award Chromebooks to Warren County students studying at SUNY Plattsburgh at Queensberry. With multiple reports by students that they complete assignments and papers on their cell phones. I'm eager and hopeful that this grant will receive the full board support this coming Thursday. I'm here today in the hopes that you will also consider our Mental Health Advocate Grant. And wanted to first clarify a little bit about who we are. So SUNY Plattsburgh at Queensberry is a branch campus of SUNY Plattsburgh. And we're located right here in Warren County on SUNY Adirondack's campus. We offer teacher education graduate programs and bachelor degree completion programs in psychology, criminal justice, and in fall 2023, computer security. So that students have the opportunity to complete a four-year degree right here in Warren County. In fact, we're the only college with a physical presence offering four-year degrees in Warren County. It's a critical local resource. As the number one reason our students choose to study with us is because of our location. We serve students that identify as place-bound, unable to commute an hour plus to SUNY Albany. And the majority of whom work full-time, care for dependents, or are first-generation college students. We submitted three proposals for ARPA to review, or ARPA Proposals, Cardinal Chromebook, Mental Health Advocate, and a Textbook on Reserve Proposals. They were submitted by the Research Foundation for SUNY. And I understand there's a little bit of confusion there. That's actually a legal requirement of all four-year SUNY schools that the Research Foundation be the submitter. But I wanted to reassure the committee that these proposals are intended for SUNY Plattsburgh at Queensberry and our local community. Clarification on funding, we do not receive funding from SUNY Adirondack. In fact, we pay SUNY Adirondack for our office space, our classroom space, and any services. And we don't have the financial resources of a traditional campus. And so ARPA funding through these proposals would make a real difference to SUNY Plattsburgh at Queensberry and their students. Related to the Mental Health Advocate Grant, anxiety has compounded as students continue to adjust to changing vaccine testing requirements and work-family concerns, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with. We were able to capture this in a student data showing that fifty-five percent of our students have much worse study habits, eighty-five percent have greater academic difficulty and difficulty concentrating since the pandemic. And so this Mental Health Advocate Grant is passed will help address growing student anxiety with the higher of a full-time, ten-month Mental Health Advocate. Three key areas the Mental Health Advocate would address first would be one-on-one and group support. Second would be protecting our future student pipeline. So reaching out to local area high schools in Warren County to provide workshops that help de-stigmatize the anxiety surrounding applying to and being successful in college. And the third would be offering a life skills career-oriented class for Queensberry campus students to build a sense of belonging and resilience. Although this grant is where we have the greatest need and addresses a critical need, I'm sure other organizations are struggling with too. We would be willing to consider a partial funding if the full amount can't be considered. And once again, I really just wanted to thank you for taking a look at our three proposals. I'm unable to make this Thursday's board meeting, but if I'm allowed, I wanted to see if there were any questions related to our proposals.
Without objection, if there are any questions, yes, Mr. Dickinson, thanks for.
Being here.
A little late, in case you didn't notice, which is not unusual.
I said you'd be here momentarily.
Yeah.
And you did.
So you're representing Plattsburgh?
SUNY Plattsburgh at Queensberry, our branch campus, which is located on SUNY Adirondack's campus.
So am I correct in saying, didn't SUNY Plattsburgh already get ARPOM money?
If they received ARPOM money, it wasn't directed here locally to our Queensberry campus.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Emma, right, Emma? Anybody else from the public? Go ahead.
Don't go once.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Graham, I am from the Painted Pony Championship rodeo in Lake Luzerne, New York. We proudly lived in Warren County for, well, I've lived in Warren County my whole life. I grew up in Chestertown and graduated from Warrens Brook High School. And we have survived what we had gone through. So I am just reaching out, we had submitted an application through the ARPA to apply for some support for Painted Pony. We were made to be closed, I get upset because it was such a hard time, I'm so sorry, try not to. My husband and my girls, we survived and we made it. And we opened last summer and we opened this summer, but twenty-twenty was extremely hard. We are still recovering in Bill, per se, if I could say that. But what we had asked for is, there was a family in Greenwich, New York, we have at least eight hundred acres over there only for the animals because at our place it's really rocks. So we have to bring them in and get them out, and he feeds them for us. We're behind on our feed bill. This family has been generous to us and has not given us a hard time at all. They have helped us survive through this. We are paying our bills, we are doing good, we had a good summer, I am not, we are surviving. I just want to not owe our feed bill as much as we do. Our animals are our number one priority, that's the only way we can do our entertainment. I have three children in Lake Luzerne, they love our business, we would like to survive and keep going. I don't know what to say other than I thank you for considering us to help support in us. We kind of fell through the cracks and everything, I worked very hard and tried the shuttered venue grant, which they told me that we could apply for three times. And even on the third time, told me to reapply because we were going to rebook at everything and it was a rollercoaster ride, I'm not going to lie. It was hard and struggling, we love entertainment, we love the business, we love the tourists, we love all of that. We really try to do great things in our community. And we just had a hard time trying to recover from that part. Resilience-wise, we're strong, my husband did whatever we had to do to survive and to take care of business and feed our animals, and that was number one. But we're thankful for our opportunity to speak and consideration. I know this is a little off of normal businesses, but Painted Pony's been in business since nineteen fifty-three. For twenty-one years, we have strong, we do a beautiful barbecue and rodeo, we love families that come in and out of town, land locals. And they enjoy our place, we try to keep it nice and clean and do great family entertainment. So thank you for your time and please consider us for, and I did, I will ask any questions. I did submit an amount. We are grateful for anything, anything that we would be able to receive, so thank you very much.
Questions?
Any questions?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Shauna?
Yes, sir.
Is this a hundred thousand, is that what your feed bill is?
We owe over a hundred thousand. We owe just less than ten thousand to Walker's Farm Home in Futac in Fort Young. About ninety thousand to the Wilbur Farm over in Greenwich. And he has never, never, never pushed, he has been grateful. And whatever we can give, we give, and he is very understanding. And because he loves us and loves that, but we are very happy. So that hundred thousand would cover and catch us back up. It really doesn't matter what we receive, anything that we can do to help with this was be very generous and very, very pleased and thank you.
I understand you're a big supporter of the EMS?
The Emergency Medical Squad, yes, Sir Johnsburg comes down and Lake Luzerne does, we do a lot of things with that, had the Luzerne Fire Department. And current, I did, I did, I'm willing to do anything, we love doing anything for anybody. I'm happy to support when people ask us and I get letters, we respond. And we love what we do and we try really hard.
Great, thank you, Shauna.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yeah, thanks, Shauna. When I read through your application very thoroughly, as I did all eighty-three of them, I recall that you had significant losses in twenty-twenty, like you mentioned. But it was more than, excuse me, more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
It was like three hundred, if I recall.
We lost a lot of, yeah, thousands of people come through our gates every year, we were unable to open. I did a little cowgirl kitchen thing out of our business, it's starting in the fall, trying to do family meals, trying to come up with something to help. But yes, we lost way more than that, I didn't ask, I don't, I don't want to ask for that.
No.
I want to ask, whatever you guys feel that we could be, but no, we lost a lot, we lost everything, we were unable to open for that whole year.
Right, and so I guess my point was, the hundred thousand that you're asking for is actually minimal of what your actual losses were due to the pandemic, twenty-twenty. So I don't think it's a crazy out-of-place number. In fact, I think she's lowballing it, in my opinion, after reading your application thoroughly, that that's what I concluded, but thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, I'm Caitlin St. John, I'm here for JSJ Transport LLC. We are Queensberry residents. My husband has run his trucking company for the last twenty years. We've run it out of, he lived in Saratoga County before, but we've been in Warren County for ten years. He employs himself and three drivers. We have been over the road before, currently now we're hauling wood from Warren County. We bring it to Finch, and he does IP, but he's hauling for people that live in Warren County that are cutting wood in Warren County. So he does employ people, but we are helping other Warren County businesses get their wood to Warren County Finch. We had substantial loss, I brought my tax returns today. We usually do about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And the year of COVID, we were in the negative ninety-seven thousand dollars. And we didn't really have any way to cover our expenses, that's what was hard. The employees could get unemployment, but we still had truck payments and trailer payments and insurance, that's five thousand dollars a month, and we couldn't cover the expenses because we couldn't work. They even shut, we couldn't leave New York State with our trucks, we were having a really hard time. Even when we could find loads, like the convenience stores were open for the truck drivers to stop and go to the bathroom or eat anything, it was just really difficult. So we applied for two hundred thousand dollars, which again is way less than what we actually lost. But we were able to take out an SSA loan, or SBA loan, I'm sorry, from, it was a COVID relief loan, but we have to pay that back. The PP loans that were for employees, those got forgiven, but we still have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar like mortgage that we are responsible that we're paying every year, we're surviving. We, as soon as they opened it back up, we went back to work, we're still employing our people and we're still surviving. But we are trying to desperately catch up and still employ our thing and maintain our trucks. And it's been hard, I can stand up here and say that it's been a struggle, that we're proud that we survived, but it's been a rough couple of years. And I just appreciate you all listening, that you making the application so easy that anybody could apply and understand because, I mean, I'm a college-educated woman, but I work at the county and my husband's the self-employed truck driver, I'm just the glorified secretary. So thank you all for listening, and I'll take any questions.
All right. What application are we looking at?
I think this one was, we didn't hear you very well.
I'm sorry, JSJ Transport LLC. My name is Caitlin, I'm the glorified secretary, my husband is the owner, Joseph St. John.
So is it JSJ?
JSJ.
Yeah, no, I got it, just want to make sure that's what she said. Thank you.
Any questions?
No. How many, how many trucks you run?
So currently we have five. My husband drives one, we have three employees, and he's always, we're always looking for drivers, so we always have one available. One breaks down, then the employee jumps in the other one.
Run highway departments, we know that there's, as we run highway departments, you know, there's always one down.
There's always one down. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, everyone, my name is Rachel, I'm the owner and instructor of Kind Cycling. I opened my business in September of two thousand nineteen, just six months before the pandemic hit. My business was affected greatly, as I was considered a gym, so I was shut down immediately. And I was one of the last businesses that was allowed to reopen. When I was allowed to reopen, it was at thirty percent capacity, which I was already struggling. So as a new business, that was, that was really tough to only be able to open that. And I had to be outdoors as well, so I had to get a tent and move my bikes outside. So there was a lot of expense in just doing that and renting a commercial tent and moving my business outside and losing the profit of having all of my bikes, which I started with fifteen bikes, which really I kind of need that amount of bikes to be able to make a profit. So when I was shut down, I applied for unemployment, which I didn't receive until June or July after the pandemic. At that point, to stay afloat, I had to sell off half of my bikes just to pay my bills, my rent, living expenses, so on. If it weren't for my really wonderful, awesome landlords, I wouldn't even be here speaking with you today. They were incredibly lenient and incredibly helpful, and I'm really grateful to them. Mostly what I applied for is, I've just been kind of treading water since I was shut down. I put most of my savings into opening, and then I had a little budget left over that was supposed to be for advertising and for bringing on other instructors. Unfortunately, I burned through that little bit of extra savings really quickly when I got shut down, just trying to stay afloat and not close my doors, like everyone else here, just trying to survive. What I applied for basically is funding to be able to buy a few more bikes so that I can turn a little bit more profit to be able to bring on a few more instructors. I'm the only instructor right now, I teach fifteen classes a week, my body is pretty tired, I'd love to have a few more instructors on staff. And for an advertising campaign, which I could desperately need, I did open. And I have been able to do a little bit of advertising, but it would really take my business to the next level if I could just get the word out there that my business is open and there. I'd love to take any questions that you might have regarding my application, I didn't prepare a written statement, so sorry. Yeah.
What, what name is your application under?
Kind Cycling?
Kind Cycling?
Kind, K-I-N-D.
Okay.
Yep, Kind Cycling.
Well, I guess I'll ask you because I can't find it, how much were you asking for?
I asked for twenty-eight thousand. But of course, just like any other applicant, whatever you're willing to give, I'm more than grateful for.
Supervisor Seaver?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Rachel, I appreciate you being here, I just wondered if you could share a little bit about the clientele that you utilize, you know, that are customers of yours, is it primarily through Warren County and where are you located?
So I'm in the new Gregos Bicycles building, and they are located on Lawrence Street, so I'm at seventy-six Lawrence, where the other side of the cycling industry, outdoor cycling, was booming for the pandemic, everybody, you couldn't even buy a bike anywhere. I was kind of on the other end of the industry where I couldn't have business. And then a lot of my customers ended up buying their own spin bikes during the pandemic because they didn't want to stop cycling. So I did lose a lot of customers that just bought their own bikes. So I'm really looking to recruit new customers, but to do that, I need to be able to get the word out. So my clientele ranges Queensberry, South Glens Falls, I have people that come up from Saratoga, I have people that come down from Lake George. I've been a cycling instructor for fourteen years, I worked at the Y for ten years, and I really made a name for myself there. I also taught a free class in Crandall Park, it wasn't cycling, it was just a group community class, but I taught a free class in Crandall Park for ten years. I only stopped doing that when I opened my actual studio. And now I've noticed that somebody has kind of piggybacked off that idea, so I'm happy to see that that's continued even without me. And yeah, I don't know if I answered your question, but yeah, any other questions? No.
So would this funding help you then also get bikes back?
Yes, that would be a big part of it. I've found that in general, people don't want to be in large group classes anymore, it's just kind of one thing that's happened since COVID that I've noticed. So right now I only have seven bikes, and like I said, I started with fifteen. So I'm looking to add at least three or four more, which does help tremendously. And it still kind of keeps me in that lower capacity where I feel that my, my clients still feel as though they're in a safe environment and they don't have to worry too much, I can space the bikes out and still be in line with COVID-nineteen precautions. I think this gentleman back here hasn't.
I'm not ignoring you.
No. So where are you located?
I'm on Lawrence Street in Glens Falls in the new Gregos Bicycles building.
That next to the Post Star?
It's the old Post Star building.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for your consideration.
Morning, everyone, I wanted to, I'm not sure whether our applications from the EDC are going to be reviewed today or not. And so there's just a couple of things that I wanted to share with you in advance of whenever that occurs. Important to note, I really wanted all the businesses to be able to advocate first. But I don't believe that there's any competition between the needs of that community and specifically some of these businesses and the needs of our larger community. I think the act is designed to be able to do both. With that in mind, I wanted you to understand a couple of things about the applications that we made. They're deliberately modest, they're not, they're nowhere near the amount of money or resources that need to be expended in the two areas that we sought some amount of relief for. They're remunerative, they're based in the nature of the act when it was originally passed that was, at least in its initial incarnation, focused on being able to remunerate the municipalities for expenses that they had during COVID. The single biggest thing that changed for the EDC, and it changed based on direct feedback from the county, was the need for intense broadband support, which is something that the EDC had been a periphery participant in, but never really fully charged with before. In that, in that name, we literally went out and spent money that we had not budgeted to go accomplish the goal on behalf of Warren County. We spent more than fifty thousand dollars for the update of our assessment data from ECC. We did not seek reimbursement from the county at that time. But I do think if we were a former member of the county, this would be the kind of expenses that we would look to restore, that the county spent in response to the pandemic, it was wildly successful. We moved the penetration of broadband in Warren County from under seventy percent to more than ninety-two percent of the addresses in Warren County, now with the modern broadband standard. That has not only supported enormous needs in the community, specifically for residents and for students and for telehealth beneficiaries, but also for businesses. There are wide swaths of Warren County that now have broadband that did not before, almost the entirety of Thurmond. Great sections of Johnsburg, Walensburg, and Stony Creek now have broadband service and did not before we engaged in this. In fact, more than two thousand addresses were provided with broadband services over the period of COVID, and that work continues today. The goal of the funding is to restore the money that was spent for the initial data assessment and then to maintain it. In order for us to continue to drive, and we're not looking for any support for the resources that we spend to actually advocate and lead the effort, but simply for the hard costs associated with maintaining the GIS maps, which are central to any grant application that we make, and to make sure that that information is able to be presented in whatever format a particular applicant or grant requires. So that's the broadband piece of it. Important to also understand the context, our neighboring counties, there's not one of them that is spending less than two million dollars. Most of them are spending between three and seven million dollars of their ARPA funds to essentially get to the place that Warren County is already at. So this has been a remarkable achievement on behalf of the county. And I think all we're trying to do is plug the hole and make sure that we can maintain the data going forward so that we don't lose any traction. On the housing front, we submitted an application. It was designed to take the template from broadband and apply it to housing. It's data-driven. So the work for advocating for housing has been going on in our organization since I stepped into the role when Ed passed away. It continues and it will continue with or without the funding that we're requesting here. But the needs to be able to take a housing demand and educate the public on the situation is specific to the request that we made. There's an enormous amount of data that is being produced every day, it's very hard to keep up with. We try to make some of it available to you in the county regularly, but there's enormous amounts of it that we don't have access to now simply because we don't have it budgeted and it would cost more than we can currently afford to access it. Things like where our median home price is relative to our income levels relative to other communities. That helps us understand and advocate for funds in a better way if we can triangulate on that need. To give you some context here, there are not quite two thousand open jobs in Warren County today. It has vacillated between fifteen hundred and three thousand in the period of the pandemic. There is less than two hundred homes that are under five hundred thousand dollars for sale. That are under five hundred thousand dollars for sale in Warren County today. That gap is twice as big as it was a year ago. What that means is if we were able to find applicants for these jobs, many of which are in places like our hospital. Or our public institutions, including many at the county. That if we were able to find applicants, we would have a gap of more than fourteen hundred homes. In other words, we wouldn't be able to house them. They'd have to live somewhere else to fill the jobs that we have here. This is the opposite of economic development and it is also a dangerous position for us to be in terms of sustainable economy going forward. We have demand to grow the economy here. If we create the housing, we can not only fill the jobs of the existing economy, but we can allow for the businesses that you see here and many others besides them to continue to grow. If we do not invest in these two areas of broadband and housing, then we will be chasing our tail indefinitely. There is simply not enough people in Warren County to fill the needs that we have today. We need to not only help the businesses that are here with the losses that they've occurred, but we also need to look out for them. And make sure that they have the ability to attract new workers and they'll be able to grow into their business plans. Now, we could have asked for far more money than that. But I don't think that, I, I couldn't identify everything that we would spend the money on. I know that we will spend much more than fifty thousand dollars in broadband and fifty thousand dollars in housing. But I could identify several modest things that we could do right away if we put the money to work. And I hope that you'll consider that in the context of service that you're also providing to the business community. This is the yin to their yang. We need to think about what they've already lost and we need to think about how to prepare the community to be able to allow them to grow into their potential. If we're going to save them. We need to make sure that we save them to a sustainable future. Thank you.
Just one second. I want to make the point that there are two applications. One about broadband is in its own category, which we haven't reached yet. And the other one is in the not-for-profit category, just so you guys on the committee know. Yes, Supervisor Seaver.
Thank you, Jim. Of course, EDC is an essential part of our community and I, I though have a question. Um, as it relates to the fifty thousand for the broadband initiative. And I heard you mention about the GIS and how that money could um, enhance or expand the, the. GIS mapping services and your ability to utilize those now. What I found really interesting was a couple of years ago. We came back to the county after attending a national association conference and said, how are we using GIS mapping? And um, at the time we weren't. Um, since then, we've all seen the benefit from that investment in the GIS mapping in the planning department. Um, not only were we able to have six months of it completely free during COVID. There was an additional savings being NACO members and then we can have additional users and platforms and really be able to expand upon that. My concern with, with that fifty thousand towards GIS, is there a way that we could already be helping, even if it was a, a smaller increase to the cost of our subscription? That could then be applied to EDC to do a cost sharing or a service sharing with that. Um, because I know NACO really talked about how you can share that with a lot of partners and initially we were a little concerned at the county and I, I. I recall there being um, some questions about how it will be used and Sarah in planning has just, you know, taken that and turned it into a rockstar level. But I'd hate to award some funding that we can actually get less expensive. And have it be more expansive and I, you know, I would want to hear from our planning department on what our subscription availability was for that. Because that might be something that we could be paying for a higher amount and, and have more users and be able to work immediately and not have to, to wait for a grant.
Well, everything you say I agree with. Uh, I don't think that uh, this is a question of subscriber base or capacity on your existing GIS. This has to do with the fact, uh, I saw Sarah before I came in here. She was the last person I saw before I came in. I, I probably talked to Sarah as much as many of you do. Um, she's an instrumental resource and that capacity is instrumental to the county. But it was never designed. She does not have the tool set to do the broadband layer. That we lay on top of the fundamental GIS that the county maintains. This was one of the problems that we inherited when we walked in with the problem two years ago. So this is not a software issue. This is an issue of the fact that the maps that the county maintains are distinctly different. Than the ones that carriers have to maintain. In fact, the only person who's authorized to even see the maps that carriers maintain. I guess it's now you Craig, before it was Ryan. There is, there's something known as the plan of record from the carriers and generally there's only one entity within the county. Or any municipality that is authorized to actually see that and act on that. That's the problem that we have. So we had to go create unique mac, map layers that don't violate the county's agreement. To those uh, entities, those carriers where they said that they would maintain the uh. I guess sanctity of that data and the non-disclosure of that data. And then we had to go make our own. Now, whether you did it or we did it, we would have had to go do it again. And in fact, Beth has actually helped the counties around us go do this exact same process as well. I don't think this is an issue of uh, Sarah's being unwilling. She's been a fantastic partner. I do worry a little bit about. How much we ask her to do because she's become so fundamental, but we're not really trying to do the same thing that Sarah could do. She's actually boxed out from being able to do some of what we do.
I think you may have misunderstood my question. It's not a matter of being unwilling. Sarah does every, everything we ask her and more. It's crazy. I don't know how she does it. My question was more about can we stay on the software and that agreement um, and working with.
The, the agreement isn't the GIS agreement. The agreement is with the carrier. So for instance, Spectrum has what's known as a plan of record.
I hear you. You know what I'll do? I'll speak with Wayne and Sarah. I'll speak with Craig and I'll talk to the people that we did initially. Develop and, and agree to the GIS mapping and see if maybe there's something we can do in that arena and I'm happy to move back in and talk to you about it.
In, in either case, the money that was spent by Warren County in advance of what the planning board has funded for their outside counties. Other than Warren County in the catchment area is essentially already done. We did the work with ECC. We did it without seeking uh, funding before we went, before we went forward. So that we could act in the interest of Warren County citizens during the height of the pandemic. And I do think it's important to actually remember, this is a, a success of this county. Making that, that decision together put us in a position that allowed us to uh. Have better results than our neighboring counties likely had, particularly in the tourism sector in the outer parts of the county. Because there are entities that are connected that wouldn't have been connected had we waited for that funding to be procured. So I think in, in that regard, the results are, are fundamental. All we're trying to do is fill the hole.
Supervisor, like it.
Thank you, Jim, for clarification. A lot of what happened on the west side of the Hudson uh, was part of the round three broadband, right? And so that was in the works. And then what happened through North Chester was Spectrum building out on their um. Uh, agreement they had with this Public Service Commission.
And, and what drove us to be able to do that in advance of many of the other counties was that the relevance and recency of the data. So when we sat down with Spectrum, we were able to show them data that was less than a year old, in many cases was brand new. And essentially say that you're not, you're not meeting the obligations that you've already said that you met. So the data essentially allowed us to hold them accountable to doing the work that they said they already done. So I, in that regard, it had been paid for by the state. It just hadn't been accomplished. But having the data to show that was the key to being able to ensure that it did get done.
Mm-hmm. Supervisor Seaver.
I just have one more question. It, when we attended a lot of the ARPA meetings and Chairwoman, correct me if I'm wrong. They were very cautious about us using ARPA dollars for broadband initiatives. They said there would be more broadband money coming. And maybe our predecessors heard that as well. And I don't know if our county attorney's gotten any updates on it, but I'm just wondering, is that still in the works or did it happen and we didn't? We missed it or did it?
You would be the only county in New York that is not currently spending any money on broadband out of your ARPA fund.
Again, my question is specific to broadband money that they had recommended that we also.
I, I'm certain that there will be billions of dollars of more money being invested in broadband, not only through uh, versions of subsequent versions of ARPA, but other acts. But the, the name of the act literally has broadband and infrastructure in the preamble of the act. It was designed to provide these kinds of expenses from its inception. And every county in New York is spending ARPA funds on broadband.
Supervisor Seaver, I think what you're referring to is the Infrastructure Act from last fall. And when I talked to the NACO representatives about that, the money hasn't been allocated yet. It's coming, but we don't know what, what, if anything, Warren County specifically will get for infrastructure and broadband, which is separate from the ARPA act.
Okay, I'm only asking.
I'm not saying that it is a, you know, ARPA, clearly you're allowed to use the money for broadband.
Use my for a lot of different things. It's just we have so many, like it's just our businesses here today are. Uh, so many applications like yours, Jim, that are all very worthy. And I, I'm just looking to see if, if, if we can't fund something from this. Or in full, where else can we get funding? And I just recall that discussion. So thank you, Chairwoman.
Yep. Supervisor Beatty.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Um, I'm not sure if everybody realizes, but we currently fund the EDC to three hundred and fifty thousand a year. Okay, and I thought some of that money would go towards some of the things that Jim has mentioned. But um, on another issue, the shortage of housing, just a couple of things that I think are fairly relevant. Warren County didn't increase in population. We stayed flat in ten years. We've increased in the number of homes built. And we've increased the number of rental units significantly in the county. So why is there a housing shortage?
Would you like me to answer that?
No, I'm not asking you, Jim. I'm, it's, it's, I'd like to ask you. Jim, thank you. I'm, I'm, my, thanks. So uh, if I, if I want to ask you a question, Jim, uh, go for it. I will. So.
Grand chair, I think it's important to respect.
Guys, this is in dialogue right now. Just finish your comment, Supervisor Beatty.
Yeah, thank you very much. I did have the floor, last I knew.
Just.
Uh, so.
Carry on, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll do that. So where's the disconnect? Okay, now, the fact of the matter is. There are a significant amount of homes, and you can check with our treasurer who happens to be here, that are now STRs. Short-term rentals. Many of these had short-term rentals or to some degree, but now it's a huge degree. Partially in Warren County. Now think about that for a second. So a ton of homes that used to be homes that people would buy as starters or whatever. Are now moving on the market. There's really few homes on the market. Because when a home does go up, there's a bidding war usually. And it's from corporations or businesses that say, hey, let's buy that and rent that out. Now. That's good, that's bad. Because what's happening is in a lot of residential areas in every one of these towns. Every one of these towns, Queensberry just passed along saying, hey, if you're going to have a home in a residential area, you go as an STR. You can only run out of one hundred and twenty days. That has to be your primary home. Because it becomes such a major problem, an issue. And that is one. Of a major factor contributing to our housing shortage. It's real simple. Now, is there other things? Yeah, it's the average family's smaller nowadays and so forth. I understand that. But the fact of the matter is, when you take two thousand homes off the market and turn them into short-term rentals, you're going to have a housing shortage. You're going to have a housing shortage and we do have a housing shortage. Even when we have rentals and whatever, and more rental units than ever. And yet we don't have more people. We have the same amount of people as we did ten years ago. We have a lot more homes, now a lot more rental units. Yet, we still hear the old line theme, we have a housing shortage. And to me, until we start each town addresses, and I think Lake George has done a great job. Uh, my, my colleague, Mr. Dickinson's done a great job in addressing that situation in, in Lake George. But until, until each town in this county takes a serious approach at the short-term rental issue. We're going to have shortages all the time and we're going to have uh, housing, uh, the um, the cost of a house. Unproportionately driven up because of that. So that's, I think we got bad issues. Uh, and I just want to make sure I educated a lot of people who aren't aware of that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I want to make sure the public who's here and wants to speak gets a chance to. Are there any other questions from Mr. Siplon? Please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Very much. I have many comments, but I'm going to be limited to just the ones from Mr. Siplin. Um, Jim, there are, are a number of applications to put on this board from small businesses. Uh, I, you know, I've been engaged with this. Um, all small businesses suffered through the pandemic. I'm curious, how many of those small businesses closed versus how many remain? And if you have any sense or any data on that? There was, for me, and, and just let me elaborate just a little bit. For me, it's very difficult to kind of gauge. Is one business worthy more than another? Right, we set out this application, but I can't gauge whether the applications here in front of us. Are more worthy than others that have decided their business. Sometimes businesses fail. We have to work through this to make it happen. So I'm just, just curious, where, where do we stand with that in terms of how many small businesses did we lose through the pandemic?
So this, this is a complicated problem and in fact, to try to help people understand it, we're actually going to launch a, a whole series where quarterly we go through this data in detail. Uh, it took me a long time to really understand all the ins and outs. I'll try to answer as quickly as I can with what I know so far. During the pandemic, there were hundreds of businesses that either shuttered or closed permanently in Warren County. During the pandemic, there were hundreds of businesses that opened new in Warren County. Since just the beginning of this year, six hundred and twenty-two new businesses formed in Warren County. Six hundred and twenty-two new businesses is the largest amount of business registrations that I've ever seen. In the data I'm pouring over for the last twenty years. So there is a complex relationship going on between businesses that failed, businesses that held on and new businesses that are forming out of. That situation. It's difficult for us as well, Supervisor Wild, to be able to try to figure out who's. Who's winning and who's losing in that. But I, I can tell you that all of these businesses are lacking people. There is been a consistent shortage of workers during that entire period of time. So it doesn't matter whether you're a restaurant or you're a business that hauls lumber. Or you're a business that is providing recreational services to clients. It doesn't matter. You don't have enough people. That is the one truism that has occurred through this entire period of time. It has never been less. Than sixteen hundred open positions since the pandemic started. This is in a workforce of less than twenty-five thousand people for our county. That's, that's a lot of open jobs. I, I'm trying to answer his question, which is.
I know, and I want to repeat the committee and, and the public that we as a committee have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't know if Craig can help us with that number on. Workforce initiatives, including what I think is really important daycare. To help people have the ability to go back to work. Cause there's all sorts of factors for why people weren't able to go back to work during the pandemic. And as a parent, I can tell you, one of them was, you can't leave your second grader at home to try to do virtual school. It's not happening. So anyway, that's one, and that was the issue. I think we are.
Need to be funded. And all I was trying to do is answer your question, which is to say. There were losses, there were gains, and it's hard to tell whether we're ahead of where we were, but every business is meeting people.
And, and I'm going to say, we've been very transparent about the application process. We left it open for plenty of time. There was a clear cutoff and we have what we have in front of us. Twenty-one applications for small business assistance. And many of the members of the committee went through each of them and scored them. Supervisor Wild, that's how we're going to differentiate them, I hope, here in a few minutes.
Madam Chair, I'm out there with my questions.
I, I certainly do not want to cut off anyone's comments.
Uh, Jim, uh, also, uh, since we've had a couple of small business um, presentations here today. As a, a member of the board of the LDC and you're helping lead the local development corporation. That organization provides low-interest loans to businesses for support. I'm curious, Jim, I, I don't know if you've seen the applications, but are you receiving any applications from the small businesses? That you may have heard to today, or maybe the small businesses don't even know that this exists. For LDC loans to help them through this process. Instead of grants. They will do a very low-interest loan or a very zero-interest loan to help make them through this process and help them through the process.
Well, I, I have not received any applications from these businesses. We have not received any applications at all during the entire pandemic period for LDC loans. And when I speak to. during the entire pandemic period for LDC loans. And when I speak to businesses, I, I ran one myself and I understand the hierarchy here. If, if there are funds available that are not loan funds that are grant funds, then of course you would go seek those first. And in fact, I've provided this guidance to the LDC. I think as long as those funds are available, it's prudent for business owners to go seek that route. I would counsel them to do it. In fact, I haven't counseled any of these people, but I have counseled others to come to the ARPA process seeking support. Because it's a better opportunity for that business. At some point, those funds will exhaust and we will go back to the traditional ways. But we've had no loan applications during the entire period of the COVID pandemic.
So just on a prior comment that he made about broadband. He did spend fifty thousand dollars to help pressure Spectrum and others to do what they said they were going to do, but hadn't done. Warren County now has coverage, if I'm not mistaken, over ninety percent?
Ninety-two percent.
Ninety-two percent of our households have broadband. Before the pandemic, it was, Jim, could you help me out with a number?
Somewhere around seventy-three or seventy-four.
That's a significant jump. If we think about funding from the feds for Warren County for more support for broadband, then what, ninety-two percent? They're going to look at us and say, where's greater needs other places than Warren County? We're basically at the point where we need to finish this last mile ourselves. And this support will help make that happen by again forcing the people that got the licenses from the state, got funding from the state, but has not completed the work that they said they were going to do. So to just push this aside and think that it's not worthy, I think is disingenuous. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Yep, Treasurer Swan.
Good morning. Um, I just want to say something on a personal note. Um, the Painted Pony has been a tradition in my family. I went there as a child. I take my children. I've taken my grandchildren and I've got up and coming great grandchildren that we will be taking there. So I just want to say thank you. I need to talk about um the Dome property and what the, the grant that was approved for that. Somehow I think there's been a, a lack of understanding of how the whole process had to work for that, but we're trying to get the money to that person and that company, but there's been no application filed. There's no financial data that on hand that I can find unless Amanda has found something that I'm not aware of. And I, I think what we need to do is have, this committee needs to designate somebody to reach out to the owner and have them complete the application and the, provide the final, the financial data and then have the committee score that. And the reason why I'm saying that is, is that I just last week had a meeting with our outside independent auditors. And they have been required by the federal government to audit every penny that this, that this county spends of ARPA money. And if we have this one hole where all of these people have filed an application and gone through the process and this one property has not, we could be liable for paying back that amount of money because it did not follow the practice.
Okay, thank you. We've been trying to be very careful. I know that that one was approved prior to this process really being set forth. So I'm fine taking no reins on that one unless you want to, Dennis.
Okay, I do have a question for Mike though.
No.
Don't.
No, I mean, and it, it personally on this, the bottom line is, is if the audit comes back and it's bad, it's my name at the top. Not yours. So I'm a little more protective about this than.
I've got the money, you'll be all right.
But no, it, I think that as long as the committee reach, has somebody reach out to him, files the application, you go through the scoring process where that he provides the final, financial data. I, I don't have a problem. I know we've, it was approved by the board and everything, but I'm really concerned that if one entity doesn't follow everything that everybody else has done, we're going to have a problem.
Okay, um, I know that he submitted documentation to the committee. It wasn't the same application form. So we'll have to go back and it sounds like have him fill out the form that everyone else has filled out and we'll go through, through that, that way. Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, uh, there were several things that we approved without an application.
Yeah. This is because it's a for-profit or?
Yeah.
What is the difference?
That was the difference. We, the, a lot of these things were approved that are actually county agencies or agencies that work with the county, nonprofit agencies and those things. That doesn't fall under the purview of a profit corporation that we are giving a grant to. And I think, I believe most of the stuff that was done was nonprofits.
Yes, Mr. Elman.
Uh, the other two were Greater Glens Falls Transit and Southern Adirondack Childcare Network. And if we're going to be consistent, we should be consistent across the board.
Okay, I agree. We'll, we'll reach out to all three of those.
Madam Chair, if you recall.
Just a second Supervisor Seaver. She had her hand up.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Um, my, my question is both for the county attorney then and, and the county treasurer. From what I just heard, the, um, have any dollars been expended to any of those three entities?
No, um, not to the Dome. I don't know about the other two. I'll have to go back and check.
The, the contracts have been done. So I, once the contracts are signed, I'm, I assume it's out of my hands. I'm assuming that payments went to Greater Glens Falls and to the childcare center. But I don't, my office doesn't follow up to see what happens once the contract's in place. Those contracts are.
Get back to the committee.
If we could get that information as well as um for next meeting to have a section on the after action reports, I believe that is something that the auditors in any audit I've ever been involved in is going to be looking for. So that we do have um an update on the ones we've already awarded. And, and to be fair, all those that we've awarded should be doing after action reports. But the one for the Dome, that was that contract done, County Attorney?
Yeah, the contract was done and signed.
So.
It was done months ago when it was awarded by the board. On the, on the after action report, the contracts that are being signed, there's requirements that they submit data that's requested by the planning department in order for the planning department to complete their reporting requirements back up the chain to the treasury, the federal treasury. So there anyone who's receiving money as part of their contract has to provide information back to the county so that reports can be filed. So I, my only suggestion is at some point there'll be reports filed by the county. And those might be the documents that the supervisor would be interested in. I don't want to speak for you, but that's how this is going to play out as monies go out and those reports come back in. And often they come back in, if there's multiple payments, they come back in before the next installment occurs. And if there's just one payment or a lump sum payment, then it's on that entity to follow through with their contractual obligation to provide the information to planning.
Um, I, you know, it's my understanding this committee will be um just banning after we've, I think it's only through twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty, twenty-two. Um, so perhaps we can talk about that type of reporting and, and how that will get back to the full board and to members of the committee um so that we, we can see the positive impact that all these awards have made in the community.
Gina, can you put that on as a pending item on our agenda, please? After action reports, a discussion of how that's going to be handled. And then Supervisor Wild.
Madam Chair, thank you. As you may recall, um, when the Dome funding, he requests to the full board. I did ask for an executive session because I had insights concerning the financial um stability of the Dome. That was denied. Um, I propose that since he has refused to um provide the financial information, that he'd be required to do um audited financial statements. So that we can make sure that this money is going to go where he said it's going to go. And I believe that this is a um a very valuable um piece of infrastructure for us going forward. Um, but there might be an opportunity for a different leadership that might be able to make it happen. So I want to make sure we don't make any mistakes with this. I was always not in favor of giving an individual business three hundred thousand dollars. I'm in favor of supporting the infrastructure that that place is. But we need to look very carefully and be very sure that we're providing this money for what we anticipated to be going for.
I just want to note, it was only two hundred thousand. Still a lot of money and we want to be careful.
That was only two.
Two hundred thousand, right? And I don't think it's a fair representation to say he wasn't giving it to us. I think he did give us financials and I will reach out to him and work with the treasurer to get additional information. And we're going to have to look at the contract. There's already a signed contract indicating what he is.
I think what happened here was, is because of the way it was originally approved before the application process. Um, I, and I had talked to Ryan Moore about this. It was my understa-, I thought Ryan was going to reach out to him to make sure he understood that he needed to file an application under the new system. I don't know that that happened. I don't know where that communication broke down.
Okay, well, I will follow up. Is there anyone else from the public if we're done with that item? Like to keep us going, we have fairly large discussion ahead of us. Supervisor Seaver.
Thanks. Just a question on that. I, I heard audited financial statements, uh, that language used. And we've gone out to our community and asked to help our small businesses. We've encouraged them after the Dome award to apply. We've rated, we've scored with thousands and thousands of requests in front of us. Audited financial statements are a very different process than what's before us today and to, to our colleague. Who's here from last meeting to his point about making this so that it is accessible and easier to our small businesses to apply, recognizing many times they don't have the resources larger government entities have for grants. That was not one of our requirements. We asked for financials and signed statements, but I want to just be very careful that we're consistent. And I, I think that's moving forward. We don't want our businesses to think we're all coming back on them, asking for even more after we've already approved them. So I understand and recognize the concerns from the treasurer and.
To look into it. I assure you that we will look at the contract that's already been signed. And we're going to stay as consistent as possible. There are more requirements for entities that were granted over fifty thousand dollars. That's an ARPA requirement. The act.
Sure.
And we need to comply with that as well.
So Madam Chair, just one other thing, I think it's better for the public, uh, and it's more of a question for the attorney. Um, if there's falsified information provided in financial statements, federal penalties for this because they are signing financial statements.
You're asking about all the applicants and these statements that they've signed in the applications. Okay.
We were very conscious of that and part of the application had a certification that had to be certified, that was inserted into these applications to ensure that individuals signing over half of any entity understood that false statements could be punishable. At least under New York state law. I, while I'm very familiar with federal law, I'm not going to give an opinion on federal violations of law outside the scope of my position as county attorney, but certainly false information or false statements made on an application could be punishable as either an E felony or an A misdemeanor under New York state penal law. Um, offering false instruments for filing in the first or second degree. Um, and potentially some other provisions as well, um, falsifying business records. You know, once that door gets open, there's a number of different penal law provisions that apply. What if any action would happen? Should that occur is again outside of my office's ability to provide a comment.
That did go, that was part of the process of developing the application and the planning department worked closely with the county attorney's office to make sure there was specific language in there that you're signing this application, everything in it is true, you're certifying, certifying, your financials are all true. The budget that you're providing. So we, we tried to walk through that in a proactive manner ahead of time. So we'll, we'll follow that process and I will be sure to follow up with the county attorney's office. Anyone else from the public? Okay, hearing none and not getting much opportunity very much further, I do want to go back to the agenda. We have an item to approve in minutes, but they haven't gone out yet. So we're going to skip that for now. I do want to say a thank you to the entire planning department. Ethan Gaddy, Sarah Frankenfeld, Gina, thank you for being here today. I know the others had prior commitments and some emergencies pop up, so they weren't able to be here, but they've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes um to get us nice and get us ready for these meetings. And I want to say thank you. Um, also, I do want to ask Supervisor Leggett, we had a discussion and some thoughts about the committee, the couple of vacancies that we have. I know Amanda said we can't really consider Mr. Swan off the committee unless we take action to do that. Is there anything on the agenda for Thursday's personnel meeting to order a resolution deleting the vacancies? I mean, one thing that'll be easier, we'll have a smaller number to reach a quorum.
That's, that's right. And we were looking at eleven versus thirteen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have anything on the agenda or should we try to forward something through?
Please do.
Could I have a motion to delete the two vacant for uh committee positions? Supervisor Dickinson. Second end over there by Supervisor, Supervisor Beatty. Discussion. Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please say aye. That carries. Thank you. Okay. All right, good. So that's that one. Um, and then before we get into the meat of this, our discussion item, applications for funding in small business. I know last time was a little bit rushed, so I want to try to back up for a moment and take a look at the remaining funding that we have and try to do a little bit of uh, organization and, and pre-planning about how we're going to distribute the funding to the rest of the applications, knowing what we've heard today. There's many um, important projects in front of us for small business. And there's also important projects in these other categories that we haven't reached yet. And I know a concern that I've had, heard and that I have is that we are going to spend all the money and we're going to run out of money to fund any of the rest remaining categories. So I just want to step back for one second. Before we did the allocations last week on the not-for-profits, we had approximately four point five million dollars. Four point five million dollars. And that's after the committee and the county board of supervisors had allocated the other what is it, eight million, something like eight, seven and a half million, something like that. So we're looking at four point five million over the eight remaining categories. If you guys still have this pie chart thing, you'll see it gives you a pretty good um bird's eye view of the different categories. And how much respectively each of these categories was requesting in dollar amounts and also types, just number of projects. I know, for instance, previously months ago, we had said we wanted to set aside, set aside, we didn't actually allocate it a million dollars for housing and a million dollars for small business assistance. That was before the million dollars got taken away for other projects. So and if you look at it that way, that was about half of what we had at the time, eight million. So in my mind, just big picture, I'm not great at math, but we would need to then reduce those two buckets to half a million. Right off the bat, so half a million dollars to small business and half a million to housing. When we had one application for housing and that was two hundred and fifty thousand. So really that one, you know, if you move that remaining two fifty over to small business, then up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. My point is, we just have to be a little bit, we have to take a step back and be really realistic about what money we have left. And trying to allocate as much as we can to as many people. That's my goal personally. But we aren't going to make everyone a hundred percent happy, I don't think. So if anyone has any suggestions about, you know, knowing we have four and a half million, eight categories, that gives you about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per category. So if we were to jump right into small business assistance, you can correct me on my math in a second.
I told you down to three point seven.
Three point seven.
Just backing it up to include the not-for-profits.
Oh, we did last.
Like we did last, we already did that. But if we had just stated the four and a half million divided by all eight categories, that's roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per category, but we know we already allocated eight hundred thousand to the not-for-profit. So we went over our, just a pure average. Yes.
Does it make those certain categories as being deemed, um, important as a committee?
Yeah, I think we need to think about that and maybe say some of these, we can bump up a little bit over the five hundred and fifty thousand average amount and others, we're gonna have to lower.
There's where I was going to, yeah.
Yeah, supervisor Wild.
Actually, ma'am chair supervisor, I, I I do had his hand up. I, I will defer to him if you'd like to go first.
To make the same point that we're actually down to three point seven million.
Yeah.
Alright, okay. So, um, I reviewed, but I was going, I reviewed the last couple of committee meetings.
Right.
And, um, I, I have a couple of comments and a recommendation. A- as we're going through these and awarding, um, we know that we're not gonna have enough money. So what I would propose that before we award anymore, we could put a temporary hold on some of this money. And say, this is what we think. And so those that, um, we push aside. We don't consider any longer and then we re-rank the ones that are here. So that we can actually spend the money. More appropriately, because we've gone through the, the, um, the community service ones, but we may find something later on that we haven't talked about for a couple of days. Or a couple of meetings that may be just as beneficial to the county as others, but we don't have the money left anymore. So basically what I'm saying is, let's allocate, if we go through the list, these are all the ones we feel that we should consider in some matter. And then just focus on those going forward to say, and reallocate where that money goes. Suggestion. Also, um, one of the big concerns I have is that these motions for funding go to the full board. Um, what I'd like to see is each individual award have its own separate motion so they can be discussed at the full board. So the full board understands the benefit to the total community and what's the, um, drawdown. And the overall perspective of the money that we have available. Lumpen things together, um, it makes it faster for us to go through, but the full board doesn't get the opportunity to hear what we have to say, because these meetings are so long and it's hard to sit there and pay attention to a YouTube replay of this. So what I would propose is that each motion be separate. We have someone come in from that organization to give a one, one and five minute presentation to the board. Give us time for some questions and answering debate and then move on to the next. Currently, in the last four, from what I know so far. Is that, um, ARPA regulations allow this money to be diverted to the county. Um, when I think about what's happening in our financial sectors. We have a Fed chairman who has made it perfectly clear that he's going to raise interest rates until this inflation is under control. I don't know about many on this board, but I've lived through many recessions. I started my first job in the early eighties. I was lucky to get a job. And I had, I didn't know any better, but I was getting great raises, right? It was all tied to inflation. My first, my second mortgage on my first house was at twenty-one percent. Do we know how far this is going? We don't. But the problem is, is that the county who provides services to each and every one of our constituents and the residents of this county is now to the point where our budget and our reserves won't be able to handle what's coming. We can't, you know, we talk about, and I listened to supervisors, um, uh, pledge about, um, the need for mental health for our employees in the last meeting. That's important. But I was at the meeting where, um, representatives from the county came and spoke to the whole board meeting. And the message that I took away was we weren't being paid enough to deal with inflation. And secondarily, we weren't able to hire people that we have open positions for because our salary structure was so low. So what do we have to do? We have to raise salaries across the board. The budget officer is here, he's gone through it a few times. Right? At this county, if not this year, next year, maybe both will exceed the tax cap. That affects every constituent. We will raise their taxes. And if we're talking about long-term benefit that we provide for ARPA, the ARPA monies. I can't see any other benefit than trying to protect our total tax base. And we talk about, some of the supervisors on our board talk about, I'm here for the taxpayers. Well, if we go out all this money, we're not necessarily here for our taxpayers. We're here for individuals. We're here for small groups. I don't know what kind of benefit that small group is gonna be able to give to the rest of our constituents. I don't know, but we need to seriously think about where we're going with this money. Complaints about giving forty million dollars to the county for infrastructure. Uh, to me, I don't understand. Right? Especially when we look back at some of the discussions we had about the gas cap tax. Oh, we've gotta lower the gas tax. Right? If we've done that, we'd be even bigger problems. Gas never made it to sixty dollars an hour gallon, like was projected. So what are we doing with this money? Well, some might say that we're giving it to our friends, our friends' friends. We're giving it to different people that we have relationships with. I can't say that's across the board. But if we're not thinking about the big picture, we're not doing what we're supposed to in my mind. So you know, I could go in, but we need to think about this recession. We need to think about what it's gonna mean. We can give some people money now. We're gonna be back there in a few years when the recession interest rates hit, who knows what, fifteen, twenty percent? Nobody can guess what the Fed is going to do. But in that case, all these businesses may fold. I know so many people that lost jobs during recessions. Jobs during recessions with these tax base. Who needs all sorts of things? So, I know a budget officer, we can ask him to go through it. I'm not gonna take any more time. He's talking about millions of dollars in deficit that we need to handle. And when that money runs out. What we, what do we do? The last time we did it, we laid off employees in the county. We did not provide the services that our constituents expected us to do. So I know this isn't popular. But we need to consider this and this is gonna be repeated at the full board. Because I don't believe that we're doing what we need to. In the big picture view of providing the best benefits to our constituents and we need to be very critical of every single dollar we give out. I'm sorry for taking your time. This has been on my, um, heart and soul for a while and I need to get it off my chest.
Certainly. Every committee member has an opportunity to say something and I'm sure there are others here, I see hands already who want to respond to that. I know that you haven't been here and I don't know if you've read the applications, but to me, there are very important applications in here. And what you were talking about is throwing out a process that has taken over here months of committees' time. Months of consideration and deliberation and hours of our committee's time and our planning department's time. I know there are important projects at the county as well and we're looking at our tax situation coming up for next year. I, I I'm just flabbergasted that you would bring this up at this late stage of this process. We're now about to hand out the last of this money, the remaining three and a half million dollars.
May I respond?
I would like to go to the other committee members and they will come around to you.
So I have to break down what I
Supervisor Seaver.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Thank you for following our rules of the board and Robert's rules. I just very briefly want to highlight the fact that our board last year unanimously, I believe, created this ARPA committee to follow in the lead of Supervisor Marino with the Tourism Advisory Committee. Where he had people from the community take part in a formalized process. We've seen it with other committees since then and the benefit from it. So we all sit here as members of this committee hopeful that the time and energy and the hours we've put in and our community members have put in will be respected and honored when it comes to the full board decisions. We often hear about the vetting process during committee. I think it's also important to note that I do believe that there is, and I hope the majority of us sitting here believe that the applications in front of us, whether it be to help with, uh, uh, EMS squad in a different part of our county or painted pony rodeo um, in Lake Luzerne or a small business in Lake George, or just even today, the bicycling from Glenn's Falls. If you ask me the benefit to our community, our benefit is right in front of us. Our survey that we went out and asked our community, which we all agreed upon over a year ago, told us mental health is in the top portion of this, help the small businesses. There, there are applications in here and I, I know a couple of our members were not able to score those. But for those of us that did, we read all of the fine print and that fine print told us that they are in need and they are hurting. And that's what these dollars were put out for. And as a county, we advertise that. I hope that we stick to our process, but to re-rank or to, to have another process at this point, I would imagine raises a few red flags to our auditor. But if we're going to differ, if we're gonna make our process differ than occupancy tax. Our supervisor from Lake George puts forth a resolution and in that resolution is a longstanding list of many different items that the committee has agreed upon in one resolution. You do not invite every single place to come in and speak at your committee meetings the way it was years ago when I got on the board. In fact, what we do is we advertise to the community and say we have these meetings. And those of us on social media or the website, we do everything we can to let our community members know as our public's taking their time, not only here today, but other, other, uh, meetings and to watch the YouTube video, to come in and be heard and have a say and you voice their concerns. So I think we have done a good job of that, but if we're going to break consistency, I'm going to ask that we may be consistent across the board whenever we do these types of awards. Um, I, I think our process has worked. It's been tweaked. We've all put a lot of time and effort into it and, um, I, once again, to start moving backwards, our community is in need. It is, it's tied, our supervisor Dickinson, when you joined as a co-chair last year, your first thought comment was, let's get the money out into the community. We're here, we're doing it. Let's get the money into our community.
Supervisor Leggett had his hand up.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just want to say, last week's meeting, we were, we'd get down to work and it was uh, tough getting out of the starting gate. We finished up great. You did a great job sharing the meeting. I think the whole committee did well. And my takeaway from it is that there's a lot of requests here. Should we be cutting back these on the fly? Or should we, as was just recommended, let's go through all the applications, deem them, yes, worth considering again. Throw them in and then work out the finances. It's like, you know, budget processes, we work out the tentative budget, go through it. Go to the final and then go to, to the final. And I think we're on track for that right now. I have a half an hour left. And these are some of the most important ones as far as I am concerned, uh, that, and, and my scoring, all small businesses got the top priority. For, for what it is because they suffered the most and they did the best they could. So it's worth getting that out there. How much we allocate to each one, going back to your point, we just have a set amount. We can perhaps leave that for the next meeting as we make it through these major headings. We deem applications, yes, this is worth it, this is worth it, this is worth it. And then come back and finish up with the technical side of it. Okay, how much, how much, how much? And I would recommend we, we get to that right now. And I'm able to share the screen, uh, with a spreadsheet and, and with, um, um, the great dashboard we have as well, if there's any questions.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Beatty.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Um, I think it's disingenuous to think that this committee in the ARPA money hasn't been given to the county. We've given over six million dollars to the county already. Over six million, seventy-five percent of the money allocated so far has gone where? Or in county. So I think it's a little disingenuous to think, hey, you know, uh, we haven't taken care of the county and the county hasn't gotten their furniture and so forth. Uh, but the true intent of the ARPA funding was to help small businesses. That was the true intent. Were there other things that you could do with the money? Yes. And we've spent now seventy-five percent of the money to the county to make sure that we are responsible in taking care of the taxes. And if, and if this county board exceeds the tax cap, it won't be over me because I won't vote for that, but uh, um, the bottom line is we've given millions to the county coffers of this ARPA funding, millions. That was county responsibility first and foremost, with the ARPA money was available or not. So let's just make sure we understand the facts and, and so forth. So, uh, uh, thank you. I just want to make sure we understood that, those numbers.
I didn't see any other hands, like committee members. Anyone want to say anything? I'll go back to supervisor Wild.
Ma'am Chair, thank you. As many of you know, I have big business experience. Um, one of the things that I was taught early in my career was a phrase that said, be able to look around corners. What's coming? What's coming at you that you didn't anticipate when you started?
One second, I'm, I don't mean to interrupt you. Guys, take it to the hallway or something, please.
So a- again, looking around corners, what's coming at you? When this committee was established, no one was talking about a serious recession. It's now. It's all over the news. Right? Maybe what we need to do is have the full board consider disbranding this until we get a sense of what's happening with our economy and what it means to everything, because we may absolutely need to re-address just about everything we've done so far. So, uh, to say that the board is unanimously established this, that may be true. I don't know for sure. But things change. And you don't just keep on repeating the same thing over and over again. Not looking around to say, what's coming and what change do I need to prepare for? So I, I know you guys often, may I feel this way? Hopefully some of you will consider that. Thank you.
Supervisor Dickinson.
I agree with what you wild. Uh, things do change. I, I am very concerned about our budget in the town of Lake George. Uh, and extremely concerned about our budget here in Warren County. And it would be a shame uh, to down the road, get in serious financial trouble. And wish in retrospect that we had done something different with this money. So I, I'm open for discussion. I'm open for discussing what, uh, Mr. Wild has proposed.
Do you want to go back to one item of logistics? We have resolutions on the agenda for Thursday's full board meeting. Amanda, I'm gonna ask you about those in a second, but, uh, Mr. Agnew, go to you.
Yeah, can I ask Supervisor Wild a clarifying question? Are you, are you suggesting that the remaining three point seven million should be all moved in one lump sum back to the county as per suggestion?
Yeah, but I, I need to talk to a budget officer. I think it'd be important for him to understand what the outlook is. I think our treasurer should do the same thing. There's people I mean, the county board that have much more experience with recessions than I do in terms of how it impacts the county. How it affects, impacts our constituents. All I do is listen to what I consider to be the smart people around me. And they're sending warning signs and they're sending, um, you know, rockets and, you know, fireworks up in the air, letting me know that there's significant warning signs on the horizon. So I think we need to, to take a look at that and just step back. And that's saying that there's no need for the things that we're doing. Um, with helping businesses and helping, um, all the public service organizations that we have, they're, they're close to my heart also. They're important for us. Small business is the lifeblood of what goes on around here. But we need to think about the big picture. So I'm asking for is a halt. Just a halt. Let's stop. Let's stop and get, with somebody that knows the economy, that knows the impact of where we're going, that can help us understand and a couple of different scenarios that might be impacting the county and the county budget. Because we have one supervisor here that said, they'll never support going over the tax base. And one other question, one other option then is to lay off a bunch of people. Because you still have so much money that you have to work with. Or borrow at, you know, ten, fifteen percent. Not so smart in my mind. But we need to, we need to seriously think again about where we're going and what's in front of us. And all I'm asking for is a halt.
I do want to acknowledge that I see your hand over there, but we don't have privilege of the floor for the public right now. Supervisor Seber.
We can stay here and talk about how the recession impacts our county, and we should as the county board of supervisors. But as the ARPA committee members that are before us, our job is to talk about how COVID and how the pandemic impacted our community, our businesses, our not-for-profits, our individuals here that we call home. We made a commitment to our county, to our community, to our residents. We went out and asked for applications. We agreed as a board. We gave them our word. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Use funding in a different way. And that is why we fought so hard to be able to go out to our community, ask them what mattered most to them. I think even talking about putting it on hold, disbanding, which those words were used, is frankly, it could not be more of a slap in the face to our community. We should be supporting them, not turning our backs on them.
I would like to move forward with the agenda.
Let's do it.
We have in front of us for today, the small business assistance applications. As we did last time, if you watched the video, we did set some aside. We weren't telling them no. We said, maybe we need to look at it, get some more information, and come back to it. There's no reason we can't do that with this go-around. I would like to make sure that we're realistic about the allocations. As I mentioned before, if you say we have what we have left, assistance to small businesses, we're looking at an average allocation of twenty-five thousand per business. Obviously, I think people scored some higher than others and would like to give more to other, some than others. But maybe what Supervisor Leggett suggested is a good idea to go through and see which one of these are maybe in the top third, a middle third, and a bottom third, or ones we throw out completely. And then we can come back to them at another meeting, or not. If we're comfortable giving some today and then come back later to allocate the rest. And in the meantime, we have a board meeting, and I'm sure we'll have this debate all over again, because there are already resolutions for that full board meeting to allocate from the four and a half million. But I still, we still exist, and I would like to carry forward with our mission as best we can. So if you look on the sheet that Gina gave us today, she told me that these are the listing of all the small businesses. I think it starts on page three at the top, and it goes through the bottom of page four. One, two, three, four, starting with Painted Pony, which has the top rank in this category. You guys all in the same spot?
Chairwoman?
Yes.
You had made the suggestion about recognizing the decrease of funds and prorating that based on what was available. I would, I think it's important for us to know what amount of money we're working with for not-for-profits and for housing. I would support your suggestion if that's something you want to do while we're evaluating these. But we do have a scoring sheet that we all abided by for those of us that submitted our scoring. And it's my understanding from the treasurer's office that those scoring sheets, that's what we have based our decisions on. That's what we adopted. So if we're going to change that process, then we definitely need to change it with a scoring sheet.
Well, I was suggesting that we think about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this category. Sorry?
Total category, she said.
That was for housing. And what was the other one? Assistance is small. Yeah, okay, so right, if we do it that way. But that was really when we still had a million dollars in a bucket, which was when we were talking about an overall universe of about eight million dollars.
Okay, I thought you said seven fifty and two fifty earlier in the meeting.
Well, I'd like, you know, if we can stick to something, try to keep our allocations somewhere in that range. I think that will be realistic, somewhere between five fifty and seven fifty. So twenty-one into three is seven. Do you guys want to look at it like that, the top seven? Are grouped together for now, but not necessarily in a similar resolution? Oh, Amanda, can you answer the question about on Thursday, are they going to be in one resolution or are they separate?
No, there are fourteen resolutions. Each one's listed on its own resolution.
Thank you very much. I know that was a little bit of work. So there you go. You can vote no on every single one you want to. So for this one, do you want to look at the first seven, and the next seven, and the bottom seven? Do you want to throw out any right now? Do you want to focus on the top seven for now? Let's do that. Let's focus on the top seven. One, two, three, four, five, six. So that goes through Kind Cycling. Do you guys see that on page three of the one that we got today?
Yep.
Okay. Dennis?
I would suggest that we go over the Painted Pony and Kind Cycling.
Okay, I'm getting out my, do you want to put this, do you have time to put the screen up or are you leaving us?
No, no, still got a few minutes. A spreadsheet you want, or the?
Yeah, the one, the spreadsheet. We didn't, I did ask for some guidance on whether or not the spreadsheets can be made public. And I'll refer to you, Mr. Alman, to give us the legal guidance on the spreadsheet.
Yes.
It can be made public. Thank you. Sure, we'll get it up online. I don't think we can make copies right this minute. But Craig's going to put it on the screen, correct? Maybe?
I've got a few things on the screen here. So.
Not that one.
But here's where we're at. This is what we did last week from the two fifty million down through, this was the total of the six point. Is that what we did last? No.
Regina, do you have any extra copies of this thing that you passed out today? That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Craig, that doesn't look like ARPA.
It is ARPA.
If you're over there in the public, could you raise your hand if you would like a copy? One, two, three, four, five, six. Thanks. Thank you. I don't know if you have this thing, Craig, to put up on the screen, but, okay.
Okay, so.
So, Painted Pony and Kind Cycling. That was the request of a hundred thousand, Dennis, are you still here? And twenty-eight thousand.
Yep, yes.
Okay, this is what we did.
Last week. Shouldn't we just go down the order in which they are ranked? The committee spent hours and hours.
If we're going to do them one by one anyway, we might as well.
Right.
Okay, so the first one is Painted Pony. The request is a hundred thousand dollars. We heard from, oh, I'm sorry, Gina, today.
Sorry, Madam Chair, that's not the first one on my list. Maybe I haven't looked at the routine. The just negative impact.
Assist small business?
On the third page.
If you look on the far side. Says what?
Name with recycling.
On top of that.
That's in the middle of.
A little bit of that, a little bit above that.
I'm so sorry. Stop the page.
That's all right.
The middle.
Well, that's too many good businesses, that's small.
So Dennis, you want to make a motion to fund that at a hundred percent?
Yes, I will.
There's a second, Doug?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Frank?
I think fifty percent, five fifty thousand would be more appropriate. I think we're getting influenced because the person deciding in their own person. I'm just saying.
Is that a motion to amend?
Sure.
Okay.
We don't have endless money, so I think fifty is appropriate.
I'll second. I just have a question.
Okay, second on the amendment. Okay.
I just, I think I would have split it in the middle somewhere, but to our budget officer's point, we all scored these as if they were endless dollars, right? We scored them based on their merit, based on the five criteria that we all put forward. So the score you see here, so that the public knows, is from, I think, seven committee members that did the scoring. And.
Nine out of eleven.
Nine out of eleven did the scoring, or seven?
No, no, thirteen.
Nine out of thirteen. So nine out of thirteen did scoring, and those are the numbers that are here before you. So even if you just looked at a prorate, you know, prorate amount based on average scores, there were also points made last time about category ranks and overall ranks. So as it relates to full funding for any of these entities, we heard even last week from a business owner that their loss was significantly more. And just as we've heard here today, a lot of these are not their complete loss. So looking at a partial amount of funding based on perhaps the average score percentage might be an appropriate way to go.
But I'm not sure how that looks in practice. I'm thinking, though, if we do fifty percent for the top one in this category, then we're going to have to go down from there.
Madam Chair.
That's, I'm, that's the prerogative of the committee, yes.
Again, I think if we just weigh in the merit, is this an entity worth having? And we come back to the finances at another time, maybe easy, because as we are looking, we need to pare back X amount, but when you start the top of the list, you know, we're not looking at the whole, and we need to look at the whole in order to make a rational decision.
Go ahead, Beth. Can we do at least, and then as we go down, maybe go back? If we think we, if we end up with more money at the end than we thought we did, maybe go back to the ones that we felt maybe could get bumped up, just to get us started, right? Because I think we don't know where we're going to end up, is the problem.
Right.
So if we just like at least and start going down, and then we can go back and change our minds, and increase, we can?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Dennis?
Beth, it's an idea, but I prefer Craig's idea better. Go through and pick out the ones you want to pay. Go through the list, and then when you're done, figure out how much money they've asked for, and how much money we have, and decide what we're going to do with them.
Okay, can you withdraw your motion from the table then, so that we can discuss them without a motion on the table?
I would consider that, yes.
While you think about that, Ray, I said I would.
I'll withdraw until we get squared away.
Okay. Yes?
Chairwoman, I don't really understand. We scored these all based on their merit, based on our five applications. So to go back and say, well, are they worthy of funding? We've scored them. We know they're worthy of funding. Now it's just how much of the funding do they receive? So if you looked at an average score of seventy-seven, or the percent being sixty-seven percent of a priority, I don't know why, as a starting point to Beth's point, why wouldn't we start at, say, okay, sixty-seven percent of the ask? The first priority perspective was, we might get at the end of this and be able to fund that percentage to all of our small businesses with the money that we talked about wanting to set aside for small businesses and get it out the door to help these businesses sooner than later.
I see what you're saying. So take, just take that priority percentage and apply that to their request. Give them that percentage of their request, right? I did say I would call it you, Ray, sorry.
I was going to say pretty much exactly what Supervisor Seber said. Why don't we use percentages that came up as we were forwarding these and see how far we can get in this, you know, one through, however many there are.
I want to try at least one through seven.
Okay.
Okay, but that still means we need Dennis's motion off the table.
Well, you look at the top three, add up to for six, six hundred thousand dollars.
Wait, that's at a hundred percent, though.
Wow, I mean, you've got to evaluate them farther than just the numbers you're looking at. You know, some of these requests are make them, break them. Yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we talk about the regional planning board? Because that is a pretty big one.
Can I say something?
Yes, as like a member of the public, I guess.
Is that what you're thinking? Accuse myself from conversation, but I would like to reduce our ask to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
There will become a point where it's not going to be enough money to make it worth the program. But as part of like the conversation, I'm willing to compromise and listen and see if we can figure something out.
Okay. I know that was, that's a big one in the top four right there.
So, go ahead. Where are we?
Yeah, where we are is this recommendation to go forward with funding up to right now. Let's, let's, I think maybe we don't take a motion, but just put some sort of recommendation for now that we do the percentage, priority percentage, fund the request at that amount in the column called priority percentage.
So you're saying, for example, the Painted Pony would get sixty-seven percent funding, based on the committee of nine that took the time to do all the evaluations to score them? That makes sense to me. I would concur.
And then moving down to a hundred and fifty thousand would be?
Sixty-three percent.
Ninety-four thousand.
I would concur with that, too. If you're looking for a motion, I don't know what.
Just give me a second. So a hundred and eighty-one thousand, I can't, at seventy-eight thousand, I mean, at seventy-eight percent would be something like a hundred and forty-one thousand. And then Alchemy Bagel, sixty-seven percent of nine thousand.
Be just a little over six thousand.
Are people following along with that formulaic approach, anyway? Okay.
Yeah, so we can do that here. We can run a running tally, like get the sizing right on this. So it looks something like this. The ask is a one million dollars from Painted Pony. And over here, then, we got the sixty-seven thousand, and, you know, we can we can run into what the running tally is.
We've already done it. We've already done the work on it.
It goes this minus. Nope, right. Let's see what happens there. We'll get that worked out. So, what's next? So.
Just put them at minuses.
So this is, this is what it would look like.
Put a negative in there, it will keep updating.
Yeah, Craig, you can make it deduct the amounts, Frank.
I can.
You just put them as a negative.
Yes, so the first four will cost doing it that way. And with a hundred and fifty thousand for the regional planning board, three hundred and sixty-four, four oh five.
But did you, did you say three hundred thousand for regional planning board?
No, a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty.
Which would be ninety-four.
I mean, if we're following the same.
Seventy-seven, ninety-four, one, three, one, and six, and that comes to about three ten.
So you're going to take sixty-three percent of the hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes it not doable.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking, instead of giving us sixty-three percent of three hundred thousand, we just go fifty percent to one fifty and probably fits.
Okay.
She would have reduced herself more than the sixty-three.
Yeah, she has. Yeah, right. So we'll do fifty percent of her original request, a hundred and fifty, which puts us at what Frank said, three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
So we're going to get that one, okay.
We're in a thousand and fifty-three percent? Fifty percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. And what's the other?
I'm gonna stay here.
Next one's Queens Rais scholarship. They're asking one eighty-one, two fifty, and the committee, through their diligence, determined seventy-eight percent of that.
Okay, a hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five.
Correct. I like your numbers there. We're rolling now, and then the uh, Bagel Company.
Feeling better.
Great.
The next one is the recycling. Hub.
Oh. Alchemy, right, so.
I thought you got the big one.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chairwoman, may I just pose two quick questions?
Uh huh.
The first one is for the Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board. Is that a small business as that's defined? Meaning, is it an?
No, 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 they're. They're. What are you guys? Their program needs to provide assistance to small businesses, but the Lake George, the Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board is a municipal entity.
So we're not.
Of some creation. I'm not sure exactly what.
So we're not awarding this as a small business award. We're awarding it under.
They they'd be the pass through.
It's addressing negative economic impacts to small businesses.
Actually, no, no, you you have employees you would hire to help small businesses. You wouldn't be providing funds to small businesses.
Right, we're actually gonna procure consultants that would help small businesses.
Yeah. After the big one was this um Mammoth Recycling one, which. It did rank.
One, two, three, four, five, fifth.
Um. To me, it looked like it was. Really a new business. Does anyone have thoughts on that one? Like, it doesn't really have a COVID connection. Yes, Supervisor Seaver.
Again, I would I would just point out that nine out of thirteen people did the scoring based on the merits in our scoring sheet that we developed. And I'm sure the auditors are going to ask, how did you come up with this money? And these awards, and we did it based on a scoring sheet, so.
So just leave it in there, a hundred and twenty-six thousand at thirty-three percent.
I just think to the point of the committee, we can always go back and talk about our scoring sheet again, but the ones that did it. We should be consistent.
Okay, so that's Glens Falls Regional Venture Ecosystem at twenty-five percent. Hey Gina. Can you please explain what the priority percent came from?
Or um. Shoot, it's on Sarah's. Uh, I just took what Sarah had. And put them all in the order that she had them. But in category, I'm not quite sure how she. Had the percentages.
Okay, we'll have to ask.
I think one of the questions was, is this project a priority? And if you, it's the percentage of committee members that said yes. That question on the application.
Is there some that you might have? Sorry. You might have scored. Um, like, like this is a perfect example. I mean, you know, it scored higher, but in terms of it being a priority, a lot more people said no.
Right.
And. Just add on, it wasn't just, is it a priority? We, I think it also asked us on that scoring sheet, I'd have to pull it up. Also. If they were awarded the the dollars, do you feel that this organization can implement these funds in a priority basis to respond to COVID?
Sure, the answer to that question was.
Is part of the priority question.
Right.
So if you checked yes for that, then you were saying, yes, this organization could do all these things.
What I'm saying, though, is that this this. Number in that column, I don't know that it took into consideration people's answers to that earlier question was, which was. Do you feel that they can implement the project that they're proposing?
Part of the priority question.
I don't know. It was a separate question. Are you saying it was a two-part? There were two, yeah. I didn't read it that way. I, anyway. Um, next one, kind cycling.
Then you can do it by the average.
Twenty-eight thousand, three hundred at forty-four percent.
That comes to twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
I think, I mean, going forward like in this manner is not going to be fair. The whole way through, because if you look at. We're gonna need to add another factor to somehow reduce the request.
What about?
Because Rachel, if you look at, for instance, Crafted. Their percentage score is sixty-three percent, and yet they're number nine in the list. Or. Look at um.
Yeah.
I understand. One further down, a restaurant at only fifty-six percent. If we gave them fifty-six percent of their requests, they're gonna get more than people who are higher in the ranking. Of score.
I do believe this was something that has been brought up on how you take. Scoring as if you had unlimited money and then compare it to the dollar amount that we had available, recognizing each time it kept getting reduced. I think that you could look at the average score and the priority percentage and do an average. You can combine those two scores, do an average and have the real number. Between, because your average score is your ideal world, right? And your priority is, i- is this a priority within the. Pool of applicants, based on the criteria.
Can we use the average score as the percentage and then it'll go down as you go down the list and maybe see what that looks like?
Yeah.
Okay, Craig.
We're doing, we're doing, we're doing average score.
Oh, my God. So, you know, seventy-seven percent.
I'm gonna put in some of the funding after.
I can do anything you need.
Right.
We did, I believe we agreed that this was a at least, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
So you want me to do the average score?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll update. No, that's not even.
It's still like my idea of dividing these into thirds and saying this top third gets. They'll get the seventy, you know, for instance, the first one, seventy-seven percent, but then the next, the next grouping, starting with number eight. Their score is sixty-six percent, but then we prorate that more. The sixty-six and half, the thirty-three. Yes.
I only make a comment because this is not the decision-making process. And I believe what you need to do is you need to add up all of the average scores and come up with a percentage for each one. So what's the total number of all of the average scores that you're looking at? And that's the denominator and the numerator is that particular score for that entity. And this way, you're getting a percentage of the whole. Of the funds that are available, if the committee is looking to do this numerically and not make individual assessments.
Thank you.
And while I can do one-third in my head, I can't do that math in my head.
Yeah, yes, I can't do that math. I understand what you're saying, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I think I understand.
But not.
You're taking the average of all the averages.
You're just trying to find. Yeah. I think what the committee is trying to do is come up with a formulaic approach rather than an individual assessment, and if that's true. You need to add up the total number of points that have been assessed.
Divided by the total projects.
No, divided by each. The points assessed to each project in that group. Which will then tell you what percentage. That group got. But it's not gonna move, it's still not gonna give you, I don't think, the formula that you want to divide up the funds that are available. Because the scoring is so close.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would just also ask that our scoring application, hopefully that's already on our public website. I believe that we agreed we would make this as transparent as possible. So the community knows how these funds are being spent, but I think it's really important that all board members receive a copy of the scoring application. Because I don't want the perception here to be, oh, geez, they don't know what they're doing. We have spent so much time scoring these, approving the process, and I got and abiding by the legal and the recommendations from the treasurer. Um, so. This shouldn't be anything that we're. We're worried about whether or not we're gonna see it in an audit. This is something that, in fact, our audits indicate, if we have a scoring sheet, we need to buy by it. So I I do think for those that did not score, they'd be very surprised to see the process of which we went through. To be as fair and transparent as possible.
So, thank you for that. Craig, what do you have in there right now for the? Are we just using average score for right now? Okay.
Uh. Average score, correct. And my computer just decided to restart, which is telling me.
Okay.
Wow, look at that. Those questions.
Twenty-one. I mean, it's at some point, we're gonna have to look at these one by one. So I think what we'll do is we'll. Take that idea and we'll prepare suggested amounts for each one. And then we can hash it out. One by one. Does that sound like a good plan? Okay.
Oh.
Well, one, two, three.
You still got one.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Wanna make a motion real quick?
Well, you can make it.
I could, yeah. Um. Looking at those first seven. Do we want to put forward a resolution? Awarding them the. Percentage of their total request based on their average score number?
And if we do that, we're going to be consistent with the other ones the same way.
Like the ones we did last week. So, and all. Yeah. Start to finish. Way you do one, you do them all.
And that's the idea, but I'm not sure that we can commit to that now.
We didn't do that with the county funding for the roads or countryside or all the other projects that were put forward to remove from our funding. I think we've evaluated. Once we have to date, we've been made aware of one legal concern that we need to look at. Whatever process we have. We need to follow them forward. Again, we've done the scoring.
I think, yeah. I think it's at least an objective way to move forward, knowing uh. Putting the percentage number for Lake George Regional Planning Board down to fifty. Fifty percent of three hundred thousand. Yeah, that's my motion.
I'm sorry, can you restate your motion, please?
Sure, numbers one through seven. To award their requested funding at the percentage. Amount based on that priority percentage column. Except for the Regional Planning Board dropping them to fifty percent. Actually, I'll just pull that one out, because you're gonna have to recuse yourself anyway. So one, and then two through seven. I mean, three through seven.
In this category.
Yeah.
Can I just have a clarification? A moment ago, you said the priority percentage wouldn't be fair in and of itself and to do it on the average score, but your motion just cited priorities. For.
Because we haven't figured out what the average score is yet.
But average for seventy-seven, seventy-seven, seventy-four, sixty-nine, one.
Okay, yes, I stand corrected then.
No. Do we have to make these decisions today? There's a lot of scoring. We didn't make it through the all the small business.
We didn't. We didn't. We had a lot of discussion.
Fair to all the applicants on the small business side. Be considered as as the whole. And for this board to say. X amount for small business negative impact. And we allocate that. Um, going by a lot of our score sheet, but. We. The the scoring does not take into account. The money we have available. It ranks them. But it doesn't account for the monies that we have to spend. And you've lost your own computer backup of what we are.
Can I just ask? Supervisor, I got a question on that. At the beginning of the meeting, Claudia had suggested that. We had a million set aside, then recognizing the money without like driving to the county to then reduce that. In the same way, so that that reduction from the general fund was also reducted, reduced from the monies that we set aside for those those categories. And that would have brought us to two fifty and seven fifty. Then a little later in the meeting, she had suggested to look at these as if we had five fifty to seven fifty. In those categories. So we did have that discussion about what would that? Total amount look like? So. Can we just do a quick math on if we took the average score of all these requests, what that total would be? Because it may be the total that we talked about setting aside between five fifty and seven fifty. But then you're addressing all of the small businesses. Based on the scoring. So you're still using a scoring metric.
One, two, you're saying take roughly, I I'm guessing the average is gonna be somewhere in the sixties.
Like. Painted Pony, seventy-seven percent of their request. And then you you do that for each one, add up the column, and the column may be exactly what that five fifty is, seven fifty is.
It's definitely under a million. Bye. Yeah, right.
So what you're suggesting is we take all of the small businesses. See what the total looks like.
Right.
And then come back. So we could ask. Acting Administrator Leggett to. Do that on the spreadsheet, and then we would have a number next time we got together.
Okay.
And we should apply that to all.
All the way through one through twenty-one. All the, all the remaining.
Right. We're gonna do it for that.
We can. See what it looks like. It should be easy, adding a column and dropping the formula in.
But I would just ask the next meeting. I mean, again, I think I really applaud you for getting one on the book really quickly. Um, and everyone for rearranging their schedules, recognizing how important it is, but these meetings are never just a quick. Hour, hour and a half. I know I've put at least aside two to three hours, so as we continue to lose people, maybe we could put in. An end time so people know to. I I I don't know what other solution is, but. We've had business, we've had so many people waiting for so long to hear what's gonna happen. And now to hear that there's no coastal to disband, I mean, I just. The longer we wait, the more you're gonna see it happen. So sad.
Well, on that note, I, it is sad. I feel like it's really. Put a damp on our whole discussion. Um, especially knowing the board meeting is this Thursday, but in any event, um, let's have the acting administrator do that. Put that formula together for us. We'll have a recommendation for our next meeting, which, when can you guys meet?
Let's do it next week.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Right. I have a question for our attorney. I have a question for our attorney, Larry, if um. The board takes action on the proposals based on too many recommendations from the last meeting. And the way we came up with those numbers is different than what we're doing going forward, is that gonna create any problems in terms of an audit later on?
Um, I, I'm not. I'm not an accountant. Um from a legal perspective. This committee can make determinations by any methodology they choose. Cause at the end of the day, it's the Board of Supervisors who reviews and independently approves the recommendations of the committee. So from a legal perspective, I'm not aware of any, any issues or concerns.
Thank you. I have blocked up next Tuesday.
You, are you blocked up?
Yeah, I know, to that point, please block off a couple of hours at least.
So, Claudia, I can't do next Tuesday, I got a board meeting in Plattsburgh.
Okay, how about Wednesday?
Wednesday's open.
What's the date?
Can we do that three thirty, I just think it's.
Okay, we're not, we're gonna lose our quorum, can we just finish up this?
Yeah, you don't have a quorum at this point, but you also still have a motion on the floor, and in a sense, requires, uh does not require a second. Can you just withdraw your motion to clear things up for the record?
Sure, I can, and is the chairman here in the building?
I do not know, he was here, but it looks like he's left.
Okay.
I can't do Wednesday.
Oh, you can't do Wednesday? How about? No, Monday's Columbus Day, um Thursday? Uh, I can't do Thursday. Unless we did it in the morning. Supervisor Seber, can you do the morning of the thirteenth? You guys, okay.
Which day?
The Thur- Thursday, the thirteenth.
What time?
Let's say ten thirty, ten, nine?
I could do nine for an hour. Do the fourteen.
In the morning, I could do the morning. Let's say nine.
Friday, the fourteen?
Yeah, does that work then? All right. And I will remove my motion from the table.
If, if it's okay with the Chair, administratively, I would like to just double check on the. Um Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board request. To ensure that it qualifies under the section that has been placed, as it's been described. And I'll have something out to the committee by Friday on that. Or at least to the Chair and to the. Planning Department.
That's fine. But I don't think it matters all that much what category it's in.
It matters a tremendous amount that the committee votes in the proper category and approves it for the proper. Regulatory basis that's been provided by legislature, because that is what drives the terms that are in the contract and the. Use of the funds by the entity receiving them.
Thank you, that's why you're the lawyer.
Opens up more funding if it goes to different categories.
Okay, I guess I will close the meeting. Thank you.